Good evening, we call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We note that all of our council members are present in this meeting. We will begin with a opening ceremony. Return to Councilmember Lawrence Nordfell for that.
Thank you Mayor. Would everyone please join with me and stand and recite the Pledge of Peace?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do pretty routinely have scouts come and visit our council meetings, and we have one here tonight. We're going to invite him to come up and just up to the microphone here and tell us your troop number and why you're here tonight.
My troop number is 1694, and I'm here tonight for commemorative.
Which one?
I don't know.
Communications or citizenship in the community?
I think it's citizenship in the community.
Okay. And your school you attend?
Gerald Wright.
Okay, Gerald Wright. Thank you very much. Appreciate having you here. Next, we go to our minutes of February 13th to the council for a motion. Move to approve the minutes of February 13th. Properly before us. Any discussion? Looks like they're okay the way they are. All in favor of approving the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Let those who oppose say no. It passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we go to our public comment period. Citizens are allowed to come and comment here on any topic that they wish. However, it is not a policy discussion since the council is prohibited by state law from having a policy discussion on anything that is not on their agenda. This is to protect the public, to make sure they know what we're doing ahead of time. But, any citizen can comment, and based upon those comments, if it's an issue that we need to deal with, we will put it on our agenda, our study agenda for the following week typically. So today, we have Mike Markham who's signed up. So invite you to come forward.
Okay, Mike Markham, 3008 West Alice Way. They've changed it. After doing a little checking and follow-up on some discussion that was made at your strategic planning meeting, I understand the issue of parking in the streets and homes being turned into multiple family dwellings that were zoned as single-family dwellings was something that most people decided that they did not want to pursue. You know, my question is, the people that turn these houses into multiple family dwellings and tie up the parking with six, seven, eight, nine, 10 cars parked either on the driveway and in the street, maybe you need to get out and see what the snowplows went through, what Russa's people went through trying to get around these cars. You know, my cul-de-sac couldn't be plowed this time because there's so many cars in the cul-de-sac that park nosed into the cul-de-sac, the plow just can't get in there anymore. You know, this same house, because I'm angle in my cul-de-sac, a couple of Saturdays ago, I went out with my blower and I cleaned the entire cul-de-sac. But while I was out there trying to clean and improve the cul-de-sac, these people kept pulling in and parking their cars where I hadn't cleaned. So they don't care what they live in. And I guess my point to this comment is, the people that do this, those people don't vote. The people that care, vote. But I think it's time that the people like me that vote want to get out and let the people know that the city council as a majority, they don't care about our homes being turned, homes in your subdivision being turned into apartment buildings with no legal parking. You know, I still got the documents from when I bought my house that said it was zoned single-family dwelling. That means nothing anymore. You just had a big meeting about a subdivision there and there. You put all the discussion into these subdivisions of what you want to do, what you want to look like. Well, heavens forbid somebody come in there, a beautiful subdivision, they decide they want to put an outside entrance in, they want to turn it into a multiple-family dwelling. What about the people that care? So obviously, the majority of you and Wayne doesn't care. You pursued not to look out for the people that care. You're choosing the ones that don't care, don't vote. So there's got to be some time come through here where saying you might want to do something, but then deciding you don't want to do anything, that's kind of like the gun laws would have been talking about. Everybody feels bad about it, but nobody wants to do anything about it. So until you decide that you want to defend the people that like the city, enjoy the city, have lived in the city for 45 years like I have, and sit and watch my neighborhood being turned into multiple-family dwellings and parking all over the streets, and you're not caring? Or not wanting to pursue that direction and help us? I'm sorry. That doesn't cut it with me. Maybe it's time for me, I've been known to put a couple things on the public forum, put it out to the citizens of West Valley, that we've got the council and people that really care more about the people that don't care than the people that do care. I think I've wasted some votes in the past. I need to maybe look closer at what I do there. But if you're not going to look after the city and the good people that live here and you're worried more about the other people, it's like, well, when you hear of a criminal, you know, well, the criminal has rights. The criminal has this. Well, the criminal has no rights because he took advantage of my rights. Once a criminal is guilty, he's guilty. So until you guys decide you want to stick up for the people that care about this city, we're going to have a problem, and it's going to start getting publicized. And I might use some names because it's bold that some of us, you know, just like the plows couldn't come in. Why do I have to pay to have my cul-de-sac plowed in my tax dollars? Why do I have to pay to have the street sweeper come through when he can't get in the cul-de-sac or over to my house? He can only do half of the cul-de-sac because you guys don't care that the streets are full of cars. What do we do? I don't think I should have to pay for the stuff that I can't take advantage of. Why should I pay for a street sweeper $4 a month? They can't do my gutter. I go out and do my entire cul-de-sac myself. You know, I'm glad they didn't check my garbage can because I had a heck of a time running out the next day because it was half-full of black cinders. But you know, we need people that want to stand up and fight for the city and fight for the people that care about the city. And from what I heard, that's a moot point. That's, you know, we're going to look out for the people that run below the streets, turn their house into multiple-family dwellings, add on to their house. You just drive down 4100 up here between 215 and 27, there's a couple people that's gone out on our side of 4100 and built living quarters right against the fence. I mean, they're small, they're little sheds, they've got vents, kind of, half of them are roofed. They're very shoddy-built. Has anybody seen any of that kind of stuff? I thought we had a code enforcement officer at this time of the year when they weren't out doing yards, they were driving around checking neighborhoods. Well, I go out, I go out with the neighborhood watch, which I shouldn't do because I see this stuff when I go out there. You know, we go through one cul-de-sac where you can hardly turn into it because there's a flasher barricade truck and trailer parked on one side of the intersection, and an idiot parks his car right on the other side. So we have to negotiate to get between those vehicles and that truck that's sitting out there. You know, you just have to drive around and look. You know, there's people that have, in my neighborhood that I've found is when I go out on neighborhood watch, just turned their carports into living quarters. Nope, no garage out back, no nothing. They just do it. We don't have anybody out looking. When was the last time any of you drove around your district and looked to see what was actually happening? Cruise the streets and look, get out and look and see. But if you're not going to do that, you're not representing all of us. And I think we deserve to be represented. Just because we care about the city, we should still be represented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comments? Okay. See, no further from the public to our city manager. Any comments?
I don't have any comments tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay. To the council then, I think, oh.
I have a comment, Mayor. I'd like to thank Mr. Markham and say publicly that if everybody cared about the city as much as you do, we wouldn't have any problems. Everybody would take care of their property and watch out for their neighbor. I want it to be clear to you and everybody else that I try very hard not to make any decisions based upon who may or who may not vote for me. I don't think that that serves the better interest of the city as a whole. Also, we cannot legislate the makeup of a family or how many people are in a family, or what kind of relationship they have or do not have in order to be a family and live in a single-family home. We can enforce building code if they subdivide that house in such a way that it violates building code by modification to the actual structure. That is hard to see from the outside, but it's my understanding that our inspectors can and do on occasion talk their way in and report that, and then we have efforts we can make to remediate it. But that is a situation that isn't as widespread as the generalized issue of how many people are living in that house. If they're all using the same kitchen, the same bathrooms, they haven't modified things, we don't have a right to legislate that. Parking is a somewhat different issue, but we have to only try to enact ordinances and ordinances that we can enforce. And if we say you can only have so many cars, we have to be able to check on that and see who's parking on the street. If we just say nobody can park on the street, I don't think the majority of the residents would go along with that either. So we either have on-street parking or we don't have on-street parking. Or we're looking at it in a much narrower sense of, you know, on this street, yes, on this street, no. Then we better have some valid justification for that. So these are difficult issues that we don't know the answers to. Sometimes we have problems that we can't answer right now, and we don't propose anything right now. But I'll tell you what, I don't think that we're the smartest people in the city and know everything. I would appreciate it very much when people come to me with a problem that they come with a solution as well. And I would invite everybody, all of our residents, to do that. Thank you.
Any others? Just in summary then, I think there were two issues raised there, parking and single-family homes. And given that we just had a nice major storm, might be good to get a report from our Public Works Department on that. So if it's okay, let's add that to our agenda for next week. I'd like to get some feedback, especially with the snowstorm. But we can expand that to whatever the council wants on the parking side. Single-family homes, do you want to put that on our agenda for next week?
I don't know what we would do about it. As far as the parking, maybe we need to examine angle parking in cul-de-sacs.
All of these can be brought up, and that's, that one we're going to put on. I was just wondering if you wanted to do the single-family home. I don't know what we could do on that one in the short term. Will the?
We can ask for code enforcement and we can start with that.
Okay, well, let's put it on there. And it may be that we ask staff to give us some feedback on the work that they've done before, or we may task them with some additional work. So let's put those two on. The other thing I just need to clarify, when an issue comes up, a reference was made to elected officials versus a city manager. My experience has been that when the city council has a majority of voters, then the city manager acts. If the majority of the council does not give him direction, he does not act. So really, your comments are more directed to us as elected officials. I have noted, and I have watched, I've been very careful to see what our city manager does when the council members give clear direction. And when they do, and the majority take a position, then he acts at our direction. So just for clarification there. With that then, see no further comments. We'll go to our resolutions. Item 7 on our agenda, we have Resolution 18-24. It is the proposal to ratify the city manager's appointment of a new West Valley City Chief of Police, Colleen Jacobs. I gotta get that right. I'm used to saying it differently. So that is the issue before us, to ratify that appointment to the council for comments and/or motions.
I want to approve the Resolution 18-24.
Second. It's properly before us. Any further discussion? See, no further discussion. To our city recorder, as required by state law, to have a roll call vote on this issue.
Councilmember Fytis Amanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Beeler.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfell.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we would invite our new chief of police to come forward. I know she's here somewhere. Oh, behind us, that's right. I just assumed she'd come out and sit with her family or something out here, or friends, or fellow officers. And so she will now be sworn in to her new duties officially.
I do follow this work.
I do follow this work.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of chief of police.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of chief of police.
In and for West Valley City.
In and for West Valley City.
And that I will maintain peace, law, and order.
And that I will maintain peace, law, and order.
And that I will use the power and authority.
And that I will use the power and authority.
So conferred upon me.
So conferred upon me.
Not for my own glory.
Not for my own glory.
But for the betterment of society.
But for the betterment of society.
And the protection of my fellow human beings.
And the protection of my fellow human beings.
And that through my public service.
And that through my public service.
West Valley City may be a better place.
West Valley City may be a better place.
For all to live and dwell.
For all to live and dwell.
And I will do this according to the best of my ability.
And I will do this according to the best of my ability.
And in strict accordance with the law.
And in strict accordance with the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We've invited our new chief of police to make a few comments. Certainly an exciting day for us as a city. The time is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Sorry, I'm up here trying to pretend not to be injured, but I am. So I just have a few comments to make. So good evening, and thanks to all who've come tonight for this occasion. I want to thank and recognize our city manager, Mr. Wayne Pyle, our mayor and city council members, other department heads, members of the West Valley City Police Department, and other law enforcement officers who are present today. I also recognize the members of our community who are present with us today. This is an exciting time for me personally and professionally. I started my law enforcement career here in West Valley 21 years ago. As a uniformed patrol officer, it is truly an honor and a privilege to serve the department, the city, and the citizens of West Valley in this capacity. As I look around the room, I cannot ignore the support here today. Not only for me as your chief, but support for our police department. Our department is truly my pride and joy, and the many people who contribute to the heart and soul of the organization. So many people depend on the service and professionalism of our members. It is a heavy responsibility to take the helm as chief of police, a responsibility that I accept with humility and recognition of the trust that's being placed in me. Not only by city officials, but by my officers, and most importantly, by the community depending on me. No one arrives at this point alone. This room is filled with our officers and civilian employees, city staff, and community members. I have worked with many of you on a variety of endeavors. I have worked for many of them with past experiences that have shaped me into the person that I am today. More importantly, I was lucky enough to have some of you work for me. It is a never-ending learning process involved in leading people that has given me my greatest insight and developed me as a leader. Every person that has worked for me has taught me something. And every person I have worked for has taught me something. Leadership is about compassion, it's about community, and it's about striving for excellence. I have worked with many law enforcement agencies during the course of my career, and never have I found a more dedicated and professional group of people than we have in our police department. To be asked to lead as your chief of police is a culmination of a dream and a great challenge. A challenge that I will rise and meet with the support of amazing employees and community members at my side. The West Valley City Police Department is in excellent shape. It is filled with smart, hard-working, and caring people, sworn officers and civilian employees alike. Our supervisors and administrators, all working in concert with a shared goal of providing the very best service to our community, the men, women, and children who call West Valley City home. In closing, I would like to say thank you. Thank you for our city manager, Wayne Pyle, for recognizing in me the qualities that he sought after for chief of police in our amazing city. For placing your trust in me, that I will do the things that must be done to continue to make our department the excellent example of professional policing that it is today. I will not let you down. Thank you to our mayor, Mr. Bigelow, and our city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to lead the department as we work to meet your expectations. Your vision for the future, your goals of connecting with our community members with the safety and service they need. Again, I will not let you down. Thank you to the members of the West Valley City Police Department. Your support for over the last six months has been very overwhelming. They've been very patient as I have learned my new role and understanding of me as I've sought to try new ways of doing business. I will make mistakes as we move forward, but I will learn from those, and I will do the best that I can to be the best chief that I can be for the city and this department. Thank you again for your trust and place in me. I'm looking forward to this journey that we are on together. Finally, thank you to the members of the community, the people of West Valley City in the end, every single police officer, every police supervisor, every civilian employee. To protect and serve is our calling. While it may sound simple, we all know that it is not. It is a challenge built on relationships and trust. I cherish the relationships that I have built in my 21 years in West Valley City as a police officer, and I am so excited to build many more in my new role, in my new leadership role. The job ahead is a big one, and it's one that I am very excited to get started on. I am very humbled and very proud to stand here before you. Thank you.
I know the media oftentimes likes to find unique and interesting things that they like to report in the news, and certainly they've had some discussions on that. But I will just make a simple statement. I think I speak for the council when I say that we selected the most qualified and experienced candidate for the position, period. That makes us very happy. We went through an extensive, I use that term loosely since I didn't participate in the interviews, but some of our council members did. A nationwide search, and it's great when it turns out to be one of your own in your own backyard. That has been very positive. We are excited and pleased. If I can trust just the anecdotal stories I've heard from citizens while our chief has been serving as interim chief, then great things are happening already. Very positive reports coming back from people in our community. So we're looking forward to great things, and we know that our new chief will bring to pass those great things here in our city. Mr. Pyle, thank you for the work that you did with that, with your staff. It did not happen overnight. It was not a simple process, but it was a good process, the right process, and we got the right chief. Thank you. With that then, we'll, you're all welcome to stay. We're actually going to do a few more things, but if you leave, it's okay too. We don't do all exciting things. And it's tradition that once your part of the program is done, why, you can leave and we're not attentive. Let's see, we don't have a whole lot, but we do have our consent agenda. Guess I should have asked if any of the council members had any comments. You're certainly welcome to do so.
Mayor, I think the chief has some family on here.
Oh.
And she can stay where she is if she'd just like to introduce them. They can hear her if she turns their mic on.
And maybe when she introduces them, if you'll raise your hand. Well, for family members, thank you for coming. It looks like some of them are over here. Okay. Thank you for being here to support her.
She's out on duty fighting crime.
Okay. We have three resolutions on our consent agenda. Resolution 18-21, and that's a grant of temporary construction easement. And this is up on our fire station, our new fire station. Pretty straightforward. Resolution 18-22 and 18-23 are delay agreements. One for Chesterfield Street over by the Islamic Society, and the other on West Gate Avenue, almost to 7200 West. These delay agreements are due to not having curb and gutter and improvements made. If we put them in for that particular business and not the whole street, it actually makes the problem of drainage and water problems worse. So by delaying those, we wait until we can do it all at once. Those are the three motions, or motions, three resolutions. Those are the three motions, or motions, three resolutions before us to the council for a motion.
Mayor, move for approval of the three items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Properly done. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take the roll call vote.
Councilman Northfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman PT Simanu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We don't have a need for a closed session, executive session. And so any other final comments from the council?
No such future.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. It passes unanimously. We're adjourned.